Good evening, welcome. I have to call this April 21st meeting of the Oakwood Unit 76 Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Adam.
Here.
Rappert, here. Creason.
Here.
Janeski.
Here.
Ludwig, here. Plottner.
Here.
Here. As a reminder, everyone, we are live streaming this meeting and we will be recording, so if somebody would like to listen to it at a further time. So, if you're joining me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize all our guests tonight. Mr. Maynard, Agenda Item 3.1, we have a Regional Office of Education number 54.
We do. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
A special presentation tonight, and every year annually, the Vermillion County Regional Office of Education recognizes the Golden Ruler winner award. So there's a banquet and a giving of that award, and it's a very prestigious award. And it's been going on for at least, I think, 26 years, maybe a little bit more than that. And so last year, we were not able to have that celebration. And this year, we're not able to have it as a full county. So we wanted to do something to recognize our people at the Oakwood School District, our partners in education and friends, and do that tonight. So what we'll do is there'll be some that will be saying a little bit about some of you that are able to be here tonight. And we want to recognize you tonight with the certificate, as well as the Golden Ruler plaque, and cherish that. And you'll be on record for having received that. And we'll start tonight with the 2020 awards. So at this point in time, as we get ready to prepare for these 2020 awards, our first recipient to come up, I believe Mr. Lee, has a couple of awards. He'll do the 2020 and 2021. And Mr. Lee, you want to come up for those, please? No matter which order we go in?
No, you're fine, sir.
We will start. Let's bring up Mr. Jesse Johnson. Jesse was our Golden Ruler winner for Oakwood High School for the 2020 school year. Jesse is a social studies teacher at Oakwood High School. He has coached multiple sports. Jesse is someone who followed in my footsteps, took my freshman social studies position. So we have a nice relationship where I'm able to go in and kind of hear his lectures. He works right next to the office, so we kind of bounce ideas off of each other. Great person to work with. If there's anything that the high school needs or we need support with in any way, we are always able to get to Jesse, and he's quick to respond and help us out. So I am proud to give you the 2020 Golden Ruler or Excellence in Education from Oakwood High School. There's a certificate on the podium.
Show me a certificate.
You want your certificate to have here?
Yeah.
And 2021 is Sandy Weeks. Sandy is the library aide. This is eight years, eight years at the high school, and another 20 before that in the district. Sandy came to the high school about the same time I became principal. She is invaluable to us. Her title is library aide. That doesn't even cover it. Basically, I told her the other day, she's the glue. If there's somebody that needs something in the building done, Sandy steps up and does it. This year, thanks to COVID, she's part of our technology director. Whether she wanted the job or not, she is the one who stepped up and does it. She has helped with food prep. She helps with project success and our kids on credit recovery. Literally, if she, literally, she stepped into the office and answered phones when the secretaries are gone. If there's anything we need down around the building, Sandy steps up and helps. People like her are invaluable to the schools and the education system. So I am proud to offer the 2021 Golden Ruler Award for Excellence in Education to Sandy Weeks.
All right. Next, we have, I believe, Ms. Lisa Acton coming up. And she has a couple of awards to present.
I don't know.
Okay, so our first recipient. So on behalf of Nicola Pennis, I'm presenting our award for the elementary school. And that goes to Amy McAlwitt. And it's ironic that today is administrative professional today because that is the capacity that Amy currently serves in our building. She has been in the library. She's been a classroom aide. Amy is also the type of person that will do anything in the school to make a child stay better, to make our staff stay better, to make the parents stay better. I couldn't ask for a better person to work in our front office and to be that face when they come and ncs. So Amy McAlwitt is our Golden Ruler. And then our 2021 is also not here. And that goes to Debbie Bogler. Debbie is behind the scenes often, but she is so inspirational to the students that she works with. She has so much patience and so much kindness. She currently serves as a personal aide in our building. So she's our 2021 winner.
Next, we have, we're going to be recognizing a former school board member and president, right? Are you okay, Ms. Acton?
Yeah, I'm just going on the street.
Sorry. One of our recipients tonight, and this is from 2020, that will be Mr. Jerry Harper. I had the privilege of meeting Mr. Harper a couple of years ago when I was applying for this position here. Got a chance to work with him very briefly as he was in transition. I know that he has served here, I believe, a couple of different terms, a couple of different periods. And I brought a lot of credibility and leadership to our school district, a very honorable person. And so he is also one of our recipients. I don't blame Mr. Harper who was able to be here tonight. So we'll recognize him and see that he gets his award. Next, we have Ms. Burton.
The junior highs 2020 Golden Ruler recipient is Jeff Sheehan, also a history teacher. He's very passionate about history. He makes his class come to life, students get excited, a lot of project bases. He has brought great innovative technology into his classroom and also he's shared it out throughout the whole building. Mr. Sheehan not only is excellent in the classroom, he's also excellent as a coach. He coaches boys and girls basketball, and that's why he's not here tonight. He's finishing up our home season. He also offers civic program in the past called Our American Voice. So he brings government into Oakwood. We've had representatives into the building and has provided some student services for our students. And so he's definitely an asset for the junior highs. So that's Jeff Sheehan. And my 2021 recipient is Luann Masters. She is also an administrative assistant for our district. Her positivity is contagious. She can make a frown turn upside down, just really very inviting and just warm, allows our building to stay positive, can bring people together. I love it. She's my spider sense. She reads me before something happens, and that makes a great team. She's definitely an asset for the junior highs. Luann's been in our building for two years as administrative assistant, but she started out as a guest teacher. So the students and staff already learn another capacity. So I'm really glad that we have you full time now. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we have Mr. Dave Alpers. Could you come forward, please, sir?
All right. So I kind of surprised Mr. Alpers. He was at the top of my list in terms of recommending for this award. Mr. Alpers is one of our bus drivers. And I was going to have Ms. Ludwig present. She was not able to be here tonight, so I'm happy to sit down for her and just share a little bit about what she said, okay? Before she does, I do read this. I just want to let you know, Mr. Alpers, I just admire the work that you do as a bus driver for our school district and your service here, the way that you work with our children, the way that you work with the drivers. You just represent our school district honorably, and we just really appreciate you, sir. Ms. Charlotte Ludwig, our transportation director, says, "The first day I got behind the wheel of a school bus was extremely intimidating. As I was making my way around the cones set up in the parking lot, a voice came over the radio cheering me on. That was the day I met Dave Alpers. I quickly learned who Dave is, a positive source of energy that sweeps through our whole driving team and his students. I wish I could show everyone a video of what a morning on one of Dave's buses looks like. He sets the whole scene with his cheerful good mornings and the daily bus safety trivia question when they arrive at the grade school. Over the radio, you can hear Dave as he backs another driver that has to stop on the curves on Route 150, jumping on to help other routes who are running behind or simply backtracking to pick up a student that missed the bus." There's always all behind the scenes work that Dave does. If you have been to a homecoming parade, you've seen the chrome wheel decals and how everything shines. That would be the work of Dave. When we get our new buses, Dave is always the one who takes in and out the radio systems. That's 16 radios in and out every other year. As a parent and a transportation director, I'm beyond grateful for what Dave brings to our district and our students. He is passionate about keeping his students safe and extremely valuable member of our transportation team. Mr. Alpers, congratulations on being the 2020 recipient of the Golden Ruler. I'm going to give him this, excuse me, Mr. Alpers, because these are some pretty kind words. I think I would want to cherish that, okay? All right. While I'm up here, I've got three more to recognize. If I could ask Dinah Klingon to come up for the 2020 award. Had a lot of time together, don't we? You're still here. I'm thankful for that. So as you know, Dinah Klingon works in the unit office, human resources, payroll, and a whole lot of other things. However, this past year, this being my second year here, Dinah took on a lot of other duties as well. She filled in a lot of gaps at times when we were in transition with bookkeeping. She's been helpful in training a lot of the office ladies in the different buildings. And the list really goes on. But the amount of hours and work that Dinah puts in for our school district just shows her heart for Oakwood. And she bleeds purple, like not too many people I know. And I just can't thank you enough, Dinah, for how you've helped me in my role here as superintendent. I appreciate working with you, and I just think you're a real blessing to our school district. So congratulations on your award, Dinah. So Sheila's been in the district a few years, about five, I think, now, maybe, or five?
Five, yes.
Okay. So Sheila, it's too bad the kids here smile. She's got a wonderful smile. Sheila came to us serving in other capacities in the district, took on the challenge of being the food services coordinator. Had no idea we were going to be experiencing some newness with this season of COVID. And she has done so many things for us in terms of not only serving kids onsite, but putting together meal plans during that time to feed those that were at home. And not just feeding our students, but feeding households. And so I can't say enough about the work that she's done there. She also assists me in the things that I need during the day and keeps me on the straight and narrow. But the amount of work and effort that she provides and your loyalty to the district, you represent us so well, Sheila, and we're just so thankful to have you and proud of the work that you're doing and proud to have you a part of the school district. You're welcome. All right. And wrapping up tonight, Mr. Tim Lee, would you come forward, please, sir? Before I say anything here, okay, I'm going to yield the floor. I'm going to yield the floor honorably to Mrs. Ludwig in case of...
I'm going to be kind.
Thank you.
Tim, of course, I've known most of his life. And that ages me too, doesn't it? But I have. And he was a teacher in our building. And what'd you come there after? Is this your teaching year?
First, it was my second year. One year at Vanderbilt, then I came to you.
Then we had cuts, and he had to leave. And he were gone for...
One year.
One year. He came back to the district and then came to the high school as a teacher. And when Mr. Whitman retired, we talked. And I wanted him to apply for the job as the dean of students at that time. And I'll be very nice and say, he's so nice that I was, that was the one thing I was concerned about because...
Me too.
Yeah. Because the students loved him. And he was going to play a different role. And I was very concerned about that. Because I, he said to me one day, he said, "This is kind of hard, you know, being tough on him sometimes." And I said, "You'll get used to it. It'll be okay." And I don't know if you ever got over that part of it, but he did an exceptional job. And there was no one more than was cheerleader than I was that, when I retired, that I wanted him to have that job because I knew what he could do. He was raised on purple light. He knew it. Loyal to the district. I hated to see him retire so early. I really did. Because I thought, you can stick around for a while. But he wants to, and I understand that, and kinds of change. And I will be the first to say that. But congratulations. And I know that...
I owe you a lot.
No, you don't owe me anything. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. I had the privilege of meeting Mr. Lee back in about 2007. And having known Mr. Lee, a lot of who Mr. Lee is and Mrs. Ludwig was a lot of what got me excited about Oakwood, quality of people. Oakwood has a history of having a quality of people, you know, that work in their school districts and their communities. And I could talk a lot about Mr. Lee. I just want to thank you for all that you've done to help me in transitioning here and to really, you made me feel a part of, and you made me feel welcome here. And we're going to recognize you again at graduation with the Board Service Award. But tonight, for the Golden Ruler Award, I just want to read a little something that would have went into the brochure. "I think that Mr. Tim Lee's greatest skills are in managing and working with people. He's a strong communicator, has developed very strong relationships with the staff, students, and community. His long tenure in the district in a variety of roles has allowed him to know many people and determine how best to work with them and for the betterment of the school. He models the importance of building relationships in his students as a leader by knowing the names of all his students and greeting them by name on a daily basis. It is a privilege and a pleasure working with Mr. Lee. He always does, always does what's in the best interest of the students." Mr. Lee, thank you very much.
We're at the point of retiring board member recognition.
This year, Agenda Item 4.2, retiring school board members. This year, we had two board members that did not return for the next year. As always, as we get onto the board, we get to know each other, we get to learn a lot about each other. And it's been an honor to work with both of you. On behalf of the school board president, or on behalf of the school board, we have certificates of appreciation. Mr. Adams, you served two years, most recently...
Eight years, two terms.
Two terms. Thank you. Most recently, serving on the negotiations and personnel. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Creason?
One year, right?
Oh, no, one term.
Just the one year.
Four years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir.
But both Mr. Adams and Mr. Creason will be recognized at the one of the graduations this year, either junior high or high school, whichever one, you know, meets your schedule best. And we'll have a Board Service Award for you at that time as well.
Agenda Item Number 5, we need to appoint President Pro Temp so we can continue the meeting. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Maynard as the President Pro Temp? Over. Second. Any discussion? Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Ludwig, second by Plottner, to appoint Mr. Maynard as President Pro Temp. Adam?
Yes.
Rappert, yes. Creason?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plottner?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion for a roll call vote.
At this time, we're basically going to begin with the certification of the election results from April the 6th, okay? And so we have three that we'll be recognizing here tonight, and we'll be administering the oath of office here in just a moment. So I will just go alphabetically, if that's okay. So we'll start out with Mr. Mark Janeski. He was...
Here's your certificate of election results from the April 6 election. So congratulations to you. If you would come forward, please, sir. This is your certificate. Thank you, sir, of election. Congratulations. Thank you for your service again. And we have the oath here for you. And what we would like to do tonight, Mr. Janeski, is I've got a certificate for you that's ready for you to just read. As you start to read, I'm going to take your picture, if you don't mind. You don't want to do that. Happy to.
I have proof. I have proof. I, Mark Janeski, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Member of the Board of Education, Oakwood Community Unit School District Number 76, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect free expression of opinion by fellow board members and others who seek a learning for a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that the board member, the board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote in a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decision of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education and the Board of School Directors, as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals to find outcomes, and set the course for Oakwood Community School District Number 76. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of the students in our community schools, community school, or schools, I guess, as to advance the vision of Oakwood Community School District Number 76. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
You made that short and sweet, didn't you? Mr. Ludwig, is that okay? You want to come on up? And we'll save Mr. Plann here.
I don't remember it being... Or did you add to it?
All right. Another certificate of election, one of our board member positions, Dylan Studdard Ludwig. So here's your certificate for election. You're welcome. And here's your certificate from the school district. And the oath, if you don't mind, I would like to take this.
I'm going to take a mess while I read this. Because as long as it is, I would be on the floor when this... Okay, I, Brenda Ludwig, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Member of the Board of Education of Oakwood Community Unit District Number 76, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote, by majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the ethical and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals to find outcomes, and set the course for Oakwood Unit 76. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and the community of Oakwood Unit 76. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the area of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
This time, if Mr. Bob Lynn come forward, please.
I wasn't sure if you were by Bob or Rob. Bob, sorry. Okay, all right. Well, Mr. Bob Lynn is here. This is your certificate of election. Congratulations on being elected by the community as being a member of our school board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And here is your certificate from the school board and the Illinois Association of School Board, as well as your oath. If you don't mind, I would take your picture.
Is, I can't mistake, I'll do the same.
Yeah, after you read all that.
Well, obviously, if I knew I had to do all this, I may have been the shortest-serving board member. So I, Robert Lynn, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Member of the Board of Education of Oakwood Community United School District Number 76, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect the taxpayers' interests serving as a faithful protector of the school...
of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that the board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions in the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, for the Board of School Directors, as this case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for the role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, define outcomes, and set the course for Oakwood Unit 76. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community school to advance the vision of Oakwood 76 and shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
This time, I would ask for a motion, and then I will ask for a second, and then a roll call to adjourn to send die for board reorganization.
So moved.
Got it? Motion and a second. Okay. Roll call, please. Mr. Janeski.
Motion by Smith, seconded by Janeski, to adjourn send die for board reorganization meeting. Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote two.
Okay. Yeah, at this point in time, we start to make the shift here. Mr. Lynn?
I am taking my name tag.
Take your name tag.
We don't need another one of these.
While we're waiting on this, I really want to thank Todd and Jason. It's been a pleasure working with them. Adam is a student, but they want the other things.
When you're dating yourself.
Yeah, but it's been a pleasure.
It's been a great honor to serve with this board over the last four years.
And good luck to you because I know you're both here.
See, buddy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, the kid's still in the district, I don't think. Be missing you guys too much. We'll see if they start getting better grades or not. Thank you, Jason. See you guys.
This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:05. And we are going to need a motion to elect a school board president. Do I have a motion for that?
I would nominate, are we nominating now?
Yes.
I nominate Randy Smith.
Okay, do I have a second for Randy Smith?
Second that.
Have a second, okay. Any other nominations being entertained?
I'm moving to say be closed the nomination.
All right. So, we have a first and a second, so I think at this point in time, we need to have a roll call vote, please.
All right. A motion by Ludwig, seconded by Plattner, to nominate to elect Randy Smith head board president. Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plattner?
Yes.
Smith? Oh, all right.
Not staying?
That's exactly where you're supposed to be. Bradford?
Yeah.
Motion here for roll call vote three.
You are back in action, sir. Okay. Uh, we need to elect a board vice president. Do we have any nominations for board vice president?
I nominate Brenda Ludwig.
I'll second that. Motion and a second. Any other nominations for vice president? Close nominations. Roll call, please.
Motion by Janeski, seconded by Plattner, to nominate Ludwig as vice president. Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig? Dean? Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote four.
Need to elect a board secretary? Do we have any nominations for board secretary?
I nominate Randy.
I'll second that. I'll move nominations be closed. Right way to there. That's loaded yet.
We have a nomination and a second to elect Eric Plattner as board secretary. Roll call, please.
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by Janeski, to elect Eric Plattner as board secretary. Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plattner?
President.
Lynn?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote five.
Agenda item 8.5, we need to appoint our board recording secretary. We do have a recommendation before, so Beth Curry. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion. Right, Mr. Janeski, Mr. Plattner. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Janeski, seconded by Plattner, to appoint Beth Curry as board recording secretary. Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Motion here for roll call vote six.
Agenda item 8.6, appoint our school district treasurer. We have a recommendation before, so Diana Klingon. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Ludwig, motion, Mr. Janeski, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by Janeski, to appoint Diana Klingon as the district treasurer. Smith?
Yes.
Adams? Oh, sorry, Bradford, I'm sorry. Yes. Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plattner?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote seven.
Agenda item 8.7, we need to authorize depositors for school district funds. We do have a recommendation before, so Longview Bank of Ogden and First Farmers Bank of Oakwood. Have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion. Ms. Ludwig made the motion, Mr. Plattner, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by Plattner, to approve depositors for the district funds as presented. Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote eight.
Agenda item 8.8, we need to establish the date, time, and place for regular monthly meetings. We do have a recommendation before, so the third Wednesday of each month at 5:30 PM at the unit office. Have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Bradford, Mr. Plattner. Any discussion? Roll call.
Motion by Bradford, seconded by Plattner, to approve the monthly meetings to the third Wednesday of each month as presented. Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote nine.
Agenda item 8.9, we need to select legal counsel for the school board, or school district. We do have a recommendation before, so Miller, Bronn, Tracy, and Miller. Have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Plattner, Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Plattner, seconded by Ludwig, to approve the legal counsel as presented. Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote ten.
Agenda item 810, we need to appoint a board representative of the base governing board. Typically, that is done by the board president, and Mr. Maynard typically will represent us at the meetings. So, do we have a motion to appoint me as the board representative to the base governing board?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Ludwig, Ms. Plattner. Any discussion? Roll call.
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by Plattner, to appoint Mr. Smith as the representative on the base governing board. Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plattner?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote eleven.
Agenda item 8.11, we have a, need to appoint a board representative to the VVeds Governing Board of Control. Typically, again, that's the board president that does that, and Mr. Maynard will represent us at the meetings. We have a motion to appoint myself. So moved. Second. Mr. Janeski, Ms. Plattner. Any discussion? Roll call.
Okay, motion by Janeski, seconded by Plattner, to appoint Mr. Smith. Are we appointing you as a representative, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith as a representative for the VVeds Governing Board of Control. Plattner?
Yes.
Smith? Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Motion here for roll call vote eleven.
Agenda item 8.12, new adopt our current board policy.
Yeah, I know we have had a big adoption in January. Really, what we're doing now is just with the new board, we're just kind of re-adopting that these are the policies we're going to continue to move forward and then make revisions from this point forward.
Talking about the entire policy manual, right?
Yes, yes, this is the entire policy manual we're adopting today.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Ludwig, Ms. Bradford. Any discussion? Roll call.
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by Bradford, to adopt the current board policy as presented. Smith?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plattner? Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote thirteen.
Agenda item 8.13, need to appoint members to board committees. I do have a list of who currently serves on those committees. First committee is the audit committee. Currently, we have Ms. Bradford and Mr. Plattner on that committee. Both like this.
Yes.
But do we need a motion?
Yeah, I would say, do we take a motion for each one, each person, or just each committee?
I think you can, you can do this all in one. Once you work through your committee members, then you can adopt it all as one. Does that work for you, Beth?
Normally, you're just appointing them and so you can just have, you don't have to have a motion for each of them. You can just do one.
Yeah.
If you just want to do one and everybody agrees on one.
Okay. So, for the audit committee, Ms. Bradford, Mr. Plattner. Let's go survey. Okay. Negotiations, we do have a vacancy with Mr. Adams. Mr. Plattner, would you like to remain on that?
Yes.
I would, too. Any other interest in the negotiations committee? Mr. Janeski? Okay, all right. Perfect. Just one.
Yeah.
Now, the head of looking, you've been done already.
Yeah.
You've got four years.
Yeah, we got some time. So, negotiations will be Mr. Janeski, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Plattner. Finance, our insurance committee. Mr. Plattner, would you like to remain?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Creason was our other. Anybody else have interest in serving on the finance committee? Mr. Lynn? Okay, Buildings and Grounds or Facilities Group, myself, Randy is on this. I'd like to stay, Ms. Bradford. Bradford, I'd like to stay. Anybody else interested in that? Mr. Janeski? Okay. Personnel, Ms. Ludwig, would you like to remain on that?
I will.
Okay. Mr. Janeski? Would you like to remain on that?
And good evening.
Sounds like a yes.
Maybe Mr. Lynn would like that one, I don't know.
Well, we had three on before, so, Mr. Lynn, would you like to be on this one, too?
Sure, yes.
It's the first meeting, it's easy to get.
You're really doing pretty well. It's only two committees.
Base, I'll remain on that. Superintendent, Maynard. Policy, Mr. Janeski, would you like to remain on that? Perfect. Anybody else interested in the policy committee? Ms. Bradford? Perfect. Okay. I'll run through these here real quick. Do I have a motion and a second to, for the audit committee, Ms. Bradford, Mr. Plattner. Negotiations, Mr. Janeski, Mr. Smith, Mr. Plattner. Finance, Mr. Plattner, Mr. Lynn. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Smith. Ms. Bradford, and Mr. Janeski. Personnel, Ms. Ludwig, Mr. Janeski, Mr. Lynn. Base, myself. Policy, Ms. Bradford and Mr. Janeski. I have a motion to accept that as presented.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Plattner, Ms. Bradford. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Plattner, seconded by Bradford, to approve the committees as presented. Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yeah.
Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion here for roll call vote four. Hartman?
Agenda item number nine, we do have a, need to go to closed session, discuss the election of a person to fill a public office, and discuss the use of federal funding and property owned by the school district in contracts. We have a motion in a closed session at 6:17 PM. Second?
Second.
Mr. Janeski, Ms. Bradford. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Janeski, seconded by Bradford, into closed session by 6:17 PM. Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yeah.
Plattner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bradford? Yes. Motion here for roll call vote fifteen.
Board members, there's a blue folder, if you'd like, please grab that before you enter session. Do you want to invite Mrs. Kimbrough and Mrs. Ricky to close session? Or part of our discussion. We start this. Do we appoint, maybe they break that in after they have it? Yeah. Okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll probably grab this. You've got your blue folder, you'll need that.
It says E2.
Back online.
Motion to reenter open session at 7:15 PM.
Second.
Is it possible? Roll call please.
Motion by Ludwig, second by Partner, to reenter open session at 7:15 PM.
Yeah.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Partner?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Oh guys, I'm sorry, Bradford. Hi. Sinaski?
Yes.
It's kind of like Starsky and Patch Smith and Adams. I'm not used to that now, sorry.
Okay. Consent agenda, did everyone have a chance to read the consent agenda? I have a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
So.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Ploner, Ms. Bradford, any discussion? Roll call please.
Motion by Partner, seconded by Bradford, so approve the consent agenda items as submitted. Ludwig?
Yes.
Partner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
And as we.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion for oral co-locating.
Item number 11, four-year request, Mr. Mayor, any four-year request?
No requests.
OCEF, do you have any OCEF report?
No report this month.
OEA? Or report?
Uh, no, we got nominations I want to pick up for upcoming election for new members or new officers. We'll see how that turns out, so if you guys know more this time last month.
Thank you, sir. Item 14, admin reports. Percolum.
It's assessment season, so we're about three quarters of the way then with IAR. Once that's done, we'll step into ISA, we still have to do CITA, and then that will put us in May for math. That's my screen.
Any question for Ms. Kimbrough? Mr. Lee?
I said I would be brief, but I apologize if it may go long. We have been interviewing for assistant principal candidates, we're going to talk more about that one in a little bit. We have freshman orientation on April the 8th. Fifty-five, I believe, right around the 78th showed up, so that would have had to be a little bit different for us. The parents are all pretty nice, students all pretty nice, they seem to appreciate it, so hopefully it will not work that well for everyone. Want to brag on the art department a little bit, it's been just an odd year, we just have not been able to showcase our art and some of those students as well within the past years. And our kids did a great job in the art show, racking up so many more firsts, seconds, and thirds than everybody else almost total. And winning numerous awards, and I tried to put some in the board report, so if you haven't got a chance to take a look at the link, please do that. And the sponsor is Mrs. Nichols, Amanda Nichols, our teacher, so she's doing a great job, very pleased to have her. Michelle mentioned we did give the SAT on April 13th, and we've got the makeup SAT on the 27th, I believe is what Don said, so we got a few kids we're going to have to run through that again. National Honor Society inducted, our new members are always looking to spotlight those kids, very helping for them. We have some big events coming up, Honors Night for seniors will be May the 7th, or May the 6th. We're gonna limit that to two guests per senior, we're gonna broadcast that over the Pixelon cameras, which ought to be able to be viewed without charge, you don't have to pay under the NFA system. So we're hoping that meets guidelines and still gives us a chance to celebrate our seniors. Prom on May the 8th is drag and fly, we are eliminating that to only OHS student seniors to keep our numbers down. That hasn't always been a popular thing, I've had a few calls and questions about that, but we think that's the best option we have right now. We are gonna livestream the coronation, I don't know if it's gonna be Facebook Live or how we're gonna do that, but we are working on those, because we are gonna allow, some schools are not allowing any parents in. We are going to allow each member of the court to have two parents in. So we will have some people in, and then they can also livestream. I don't know about dancing, we are still waiting to hear the guidelines and guidance on this. This is a whole long discussion, humorous and non-humorous. There will be entertainment that night, we're not sure what it will be, and I will be honest, right now our numbers are very low. Kids are just choosing not to do things, anything. I'm gonna get on the announcements tomorrow and try to drum up some more support, I feel like we have people putting a lot of work to do this, to try to give them the opportunity. We understand it's kinda disappointing, it's not quite the same, but we're gonna try.
Mr. Lee, on that note, if you, if our parents or people that have concerns about the building and the facility and how that all works, they should feel free to contact me. In addition, you know, the way we got around these guidelines is by luck, when I built that building, it has three sides that open. It's that facility technically open air, there's over a hundred feet of open air. You're gonna have to have some more wranglers if we decide.
I know, I got more wranglers than students signed up.
If it gets to the point where the outside weather is conducive, that whole building can be opened up, that's gonna ease a lot of people's fears. I also don't have recirculated air in that building, so if that building was built with PTAC units across the top, they constantly suck in air. The air only goes one, one way, clean air in to the outside, so there's no recirculating air in it, but if the weather's nice enough, we'll open that.
That's our plan.
Just make sure I have help to keep people healthy. Once it starts, there's eleven acres of lines to hide in.
I got some prom stories, I don't need one more on my lattice either. So yeah, appreciate that, our plan is to go open air as much as possible.
Good, yeah.
Some more details will be coming, I really hope that Bismarck and a few other local schools that have their prom before us, I could get some tips, and the Bismarck principal told me they moved their prom to after me now, they wanna see how well we're doing. I wasn't very happy with Mr. Radman, but graduation, spent a lot of time over the past three weeks talking graduation, because this is all new, or not all new, I mean, we used to go outside, but we haven't done this in twenty-five years or whatever, going outside. So I sent some plans to Mr. Maynard, and I can send those all around, right now what we're encouraging, we are not gonna limit who can come. Anybody can come that wants to, we'll be outside on the football field, but we're kinda saying bring your own lawn chairs. The bleachers will be available, we will have the visiting bleachers there, but we're, it's, as you know, it's just a lot of work setting up chairs and then board down, wrangling, moving them in and out. So what we would like to do in this year of the COVID is bring your own lawn chairs, make yourself comfortable, spread out as much as you like or feel comfortable with. And we will also be broadcasting that livestream to the Pixelon cameras, so people can show up, so. We have spent a lot of time preparing for that, and I'm sure that we have still forgotten something, we have run into stage. So literally every day we're rethinking about this. Summer school, we're gonna work with Project Success, they're gonna run our program, that'll be basically, they'd be credit recovery through a program that they have to be in, they gotta come to school. We are not gonna do any more of the, you can do this from home. If you want the credit recovery, you're gonna need to be in the building five days a week, five hours a day for four weeks. If you have two absences, you're good, the third absence, you're out of the program. So we'll see how that goes, we've got great support from Project Success already. Couple of questions I need for you, first of all is, we need to talk to board members who would like to give diplomas that day. So in the past, we've had two, three, four, the stage might be limited size-wise, so I don't know if anybody's interested in handing out diplomas today, you can let Mr. Maynard know later, he can, how far you can talk to me, if that's something you're interested in. The other question I have for you is semester exams. I would like to require all students to be in school for their semester exams. High stakes testing, and we have to be honest, we think a lot of our students are not doing. They're having others do their work, or they're finding ways around doing the work. So my teachers are, and we spent a lot of time talking about this today, because I wanna make sure they're on board with this too, we would like to require it. We know that we have some people who could give a medical reason to not be in, if that is the case, I will work with them, if they can show me the note, I'll work with them to come in on, on a Wednesday or after 1:40, when all the kids are gone, I will work with them as best as I can. But require everyone else to be in, I need to talk with Shar because that could cause a transportation problem, or you need to work out some of these things. But I'm kinda looking for advice, yea or nay, do I go with this, because I'm sure there'll be some parental pushback, once I say this.
I support.
I support them.
Because there's some people who wanna come in now, I'm telling them, you can't come in now, we'd be limited, and now I'm gonna say, now you gotta come in on a day. Like, and see there would be, might be some people who would be angry at that. There are some people, frankly, I had a teacher tell me that the kids will, some of the kids will fail, because they have been cheating all year long, and we haven't been able to catch them. Now you make them come in, those scores are gonna be bad. I'm not looking to catch anybody, but we did have a lot of problems first semester with the teacher saying, there's no way you knew that, and the kids said, oh yeah, I did. So I got in a lot of he said, she said disputes, and by having them there, my teachers are comfortable that we can say, this is your work, this is no one else's work.
My only suggestion would be to have a plan in place for what you do with the habit that this causes. This is, you're gonna cause kids to fail, they're gonna, their kids are gonna have to get held back, mine's probably gonna have to get held back, so we need the infrastructure in place to support them, you know, if it's over the summer or.
Well, that's credit recovery, we'd be part of that, okay? And then, yeah, we're prepared to, I said, we, some people are prepared to offer more classes next year in certain levels to try to catch us back up. I'm sure Aang will maybe have in similar situations where, I mean, we have to be prepared next year, you may have a lot more freshman social studies kids than normal, because you've got kids who are held back, lots more that are coming in. You know, we just have to be prepared for strange numbers in classes that we have had in the past.
So.
Sounds like you're already thinking about it.
Any other thoughts about exams in person?
I just think if you offered them, just like you said, if you offer them, they don't wanna come in with everyone else, parents don't want them to, if you set aside the time, there's just them, I, I think that's a, it's maybe not perfect, but you've given a solution to them.
Well, conveniently enough, we are working right now with exams being on a Tuesday and Thursday. Since the Wednesday, no student day, I get offered, your students can come in on the Wednesday, when I don't have any other students here, small numbers, and take D.C. I don't think they can all that day, but we can take a big time.
Realistically, how many tests were we talking about?
What do you mean tests?
How many testing, you mentioned test, how many tests will this?
Well, a kid could have six, six classes.
So six classes, how many kids?
Normally exams are over two days.
Yeah.
So you, we do like the even numbers on Tuesday, we'll do the odd number exams on Thursday. So a kid could come in on a Wednesday, could probably knock out three, four, maybe some of them are shorter than others, but I don't think you do them all. Let's say we have a kid who misses an exam, grandfather passed away, or family went on vacation, we just schedule it for after school. When you come back, when you're ready, Mr. Lee, I'll have your exam, we'll practice it, we'll offer the same thing. You can't come in during exam day, I'll be here all summer long, you can come in, take D.C.
We have that school improvement day built in also on that Friday, don't you?
Yeah, we've got some time afterward, it isn't like, and as I said, we, almost every summer, you know, I sit around and give exams for kids who are gone. But I just, I just think there'll be some pushback here, and make sure you guys are aware too, if you have any tips from Sarma High School, thoughts on that?
We make our estimate.
Perfect. I do have several kids who are out with remote, but for all exams, they come to the building.
I have no, I have no pushback.
Okay, well, I'm ready to do that, and we will, I think another thing, Eric, is we need to get this information out quickly.
Yeah.
People need to know, so I'll be working on how we frame that and how we get that out for the people, so they can start preparing. Complaining first, then preparing. Uh, I think that is all I know, thank you very much.
Any question for Mr. Lee? Mr. Row?
Well, our soccer team won the conference, so that's a, that's a highlight. From one and one is what they, what their record was, they broke a bunch of records, you can see that in the reports, I won't go through all that, but they had a really good season. We have six sports going on right now. When everything pushed into the spring, summer, we have six sports, I have three boys who are freshmen that are actually practicing or playing in three sports right now at the same time. That's a kudos to our coaches that allow that to happen, because the coaches realized that in a normal year, those kids would probably be playing those sports at a different time, so they don't want them to miss it, so I applaud our coaches for that. We have two athletes that based on what I've seen so far, will probably be four sport letter winners this year. Okay, which is something that you, you used to hear about in the, back in the sixties and seventies, but in today's world, that doesn't happen, but we're gonna have two that I know for sure. One part of the business, we need to renew our membership for the IHSA, so I've got that, the board president or secretary will need to sign, and we get that turned in. The IHSA is going, because they've lost so much money due to the COVID, they're gonna start charging us a fee in '21 and '22. What they've done this year is we paid a hundred dollars per sport, so we have actually paid about eight hundred dollars in entry fees this year that normally we wouldn't pay. And those are only sports that they have a postseason playoff, if they had a regional in that sport, then you had to pay a hundred dollars for your team to play in the regional. We've already expended eight hundred dollars, next year they're going to a, a fee based on enrollment. Now, our enrollment is about 307, and it's interesting, because that's where their cutoff is. Mr. Lee looked at some of the attendance and things for next year and projected we'd probably be at 208. So the cutoff is, if we're at 307, we will play, pay eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for our annual fee, but they will not require us to pay any entry fees, they're kinda shifting to this, this method. If we're at 307.5, we'll pay twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
I can. I can.
So you may wanna keep something.
Okay, so we need to tie our numbers.
In, in '22 and '23, the schedule that they got, basically the 307 will go down to four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and anything over 307 will be a 625. So they're just trying to get back on their feet, and I wanna make the board aware of that, so when that bill, bill comes in, because we're gonna have to pay that membership fee before September 1st, is what the, what the government said. We will have some volunteer coaches that I've got later on in the agenda, some recommendations, I'll talk about those at that point in time. We opened up the assistant softball coach to end the district again, just to make one last effort to see if there's anybody that would, that would be willing to be the assistant softball coach. That closes tomorrow, and I have heard nothing from anyone within the district. So the two volunteer assistants will go with them for a while and see, and I'm very happy, our new softball coach is doing excellent, she had the girls out there hitting tonight, they've got a game tomorrow at Heritage, that's their first game. I asked her if they were ready, and she said that she feels like, like they're ready, so the girls have given excellent feedback on the practices and everything, I think that she's doing an excellent job, and I look forward to what she, she has for us this season. And hopefully we can keep her for a long time. Okay, she's got a lot of experience, I've been, I've been heavily recruiting her to play in the program. She has indicated to me that she may be interested in the junior high program as well, which would be a huge win, so we're looking for those types of things. That is all I have at this point in time, does she have any questions?
You experiencing any goals of junior, seniors, not wanting to participate?
I think our, our junior, senior numbers are down in some sports, but then not in others, the, the big hit was in boys' track. Last year we had a ton of senior boys off the track, this year, I think we've got maybe one or two boys, period, one of them just a senior, but we, our track numbers are down.
There's a lot of schools that are struggling to abandon any football program, Hillary Mitchell is promoting Johnson Football.
Right.
I think when you play baseball, we've just seen.
Yes.
Have you?
Yes, we just have a lot of senior boys that have been looking at the season. And one good, good thing is, you know, like I said, the coaches working together, our, our wrestling just started on Monday, and we co-op with Softport, so some of these are Softport athletes as well, but he's got almost thirty kids out. And, and three of the boys are wrestling, are also doing baseball, and they're playing football right now, so that's the three kids that I was talking about, competing in three sports right now. And so the wrestling program looks, looks really strong, so Coach Foster's done a great job, the other coaches supported him, and, and supported each other all the way around, so our coaching staff has, has been great, making sure that the kids get every opportunity they can to do what they wanna do, and the coaches have just stepped in, I can't be happier about that.
Our number is down, we don't have any eligibility, it's played a big part in it, but we only have four girls basketball players, so we canceled them, we had five Tuesday, we had nine girls basketball players.
We're, we're very short girls basketball coming, we are going to struggle numbers-wise the next couple of years. And a lot of emphasis has been pushed to volleyball, if we're gonna be honest, and we're not getting a lot of basketball interest.
It's gonna be pretty sad to see, and kids' priorities, some, some cases are, I mean, I know a lot, a lot of juniors and seniors, I have, they're working, they're working.
Yes, you're right, I think that's a big, big thing with a lot of our athletes, is they're working, once they started that work process, they just continue. A couple of other notes, you were mentioning about the programs, Georgetown shut their football program down, what, two weeks ago? And I just got an email before the meeting tonight, that Hoopston is who our last game is with, their A.D. contacted me, said they are really low on numbers, and they're not sure they're gonna be able to play on Friday night. I reached out to Westville, said Westville is supposed to play Georgetown this coming Friday, but I think they pretty well shut their program down already, because they didn't have an opponent for this week. But they're at least asking their head coach and seeing if they're willing to come over and play, if Hoopston can't, so they're trying to at least get one more game for, for the guys, and hopefully that works out.
I don't know, there's some cases in front now.
It's been a stressful year, I will say that, I think you packed so much into form, and so, some of our athletic boys, I feel, were tired.
Yes, yes.
Because they went straight from basketball and football, and now they're practicing football and baseball at the same time, and they, they're pretty tired.
Yeah, so the, the Hoopston A.D. said, you know, they just had kids quit showing up for practice this week, last week, and they just, they're shut down. So they're trying to figure out if those kids are gonna actually play Friday night or not, and so I feel fortunate for what we have here, and the athletes that we have, and the support that we have.
Mr. Row? Junior high school, Ms. Burton?
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, we are at the end of our IER testing. I want to thank Chris. We promised him the first day we were having some trouble, and lunch he came and he brought me a server, and it has been smooth. I really appreciate that upgrade, because this made a little difference for us. We can continue to improve. I'm really proud of our kids. They're spending time, and they're being very serious. And I hope to get a good picture of where, a snapshot of where our kids are at. The last goal this year is a little different. Typically, we do evenings of two of the teams triads this year. Uh, Softport graciously opens their building up for two Saturdays, and we had tournaments, and we did half scholarship match, or half syllable matches. It worked really well. The kids enjoyed it. Um, the, the sponsors enjoyed it, and I think we're gonna look at transferring that program to more of a Saturday, and then we don't have to worry about competing with other sports, track and things, and worry about that. So we are gonna hope that that will bring numbers up for syllable and our students. Uh, honors, we typically do, um, in an evening, but this year with all of our changes, we're gonna take that obstacle, make it an opportunity. We're gonna split it to two mornings. We'll have an eighth grade honors morning, and we'll live feed it for parents. And then the following week, we'll do a seventh grade honors during the day, and we'll live feed that for parents too. So because we feel that we need to recognize students, and what I like about this too is some of those kids that would show up at night don't see some of the things that you can get. Don't get to see their peers and the support that they have within each other. So, um, I'm looking forward to that, um, change for this year. Graduation will be at four o'clock, um, after the high school. Uh, we are working out and fine tuning those things with our eighth grade sponsors, and I look forward to providing that graduation. That football field, it's gonna be a great opportunity for our families. Summer school for the junior high, we have a handful of students that have struggled this year. So we talk about, are they looking at a bonus quarter or a bonus year? Our goal is to hopefully use the summertime, extend instruction, to get them onto the next year. So if you're an eighth grader, after graduation, they'll come to school. Those kids doing summer school, that last week when we only have seventh graders. We're gonna do some pre-testing. We're gonna have them finish some workup. We're gonna build a good skill, ready to go into summer school. It will be in person. Be four days a week, two hours instruction for math, two hours instruction for, uh, reading. They can miss no more than two days, three, you're out. And on the eighteenth, if you're behind, I'll dismiss you. We gotta take it serious. We're compacting it. I think we've got a great math curriculum that's gonna get us through and review that year. Seventh graders will start on the seventh and be finished on the thirtieth, and they'll also run the same kind of programs as our eighth grade. So we're hoping that that program will support us. And again, we're looking at not only the summer, but into the fall, how we can continue to support our kids and build them up and fill some of those gaps that we are finding. And then, so I think that's, that's gonna be really well. We're working with Project Success. On our Fridays, we want our kids to have an opportunity to do some enrichment, spend some time with teachers to get taught up maybe. Uh, they'll have cooking club, and they'll have an opportunity to learn how to put the U-Blade. So we wanted to not only do academic, we wanted to give them a little enrichment too. To just get them there and give them support. And, uh, IESA renewal will come to you next month. And from my understanding, there'll be, um, some credits that we get, so we'll hopefully have a little bit of a dip this year going into next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Uh, grade school, Ms. Puskin, be here. Uh, Ms. Acton?
Sure. Um, so I provided a lot of information from Mrs. Pennis. Her tentative plan is to return on Sunday, and I am very excited to have that. We have been working on summer school together. We're going to operate the Oakwood Grade School program very similar to what Mrs. Burton described. Um, we are doing it with invite only at this point, and then we will have a waiting list based on the need. Right now, we have about sixty students on our invite list. Um, we took a look at attendance, we did a look at where they were struggling. Um, there are a lot of factors, teacher-generated, um, input into that. Some are going to do it to be able to promote into the next grade level, and for others, it's an intervention-type program and to catch up and keep up with their peers. We will have a section, our tentative plan is to have a section for every grade level. With the exception to fourth and fifth, our numbers are a little bit lower there, so fourth and fifth might be combined. We've had a lot of teacher interest. Talking to Mrs. Kimrow when we first came in, we probably need one to two more teachers, um, depending on what happens today. But we've had a lot of great plans and really thankful for all of our team coming together to work on transportation and meals. Uh, other things that we're working on is a lot of, um, project-based learning in the grade school. I provided pictures, a lot more science experiments going on right now. Kind of modified conservation Olympics going on in sixth grade and writing for those projects. I think the biggest thing that I have personally, and I kind of segue into somewhat the high school thing, and I would like to see court input on, um, the basketball program at the fifth and sixth grade level at the grade school. Obviously, the program was canceled this year, going into it. We always have it at the start of the year. So I was trying to work with Mrs. Dudley on coming up with like some historical information. Uh, I found where there were nine games in two thousand nineteen for girls and eleven games for boys. When I started working on contracts and contacting other school districts to go ahead and make the alignment for this next season, I was getting an overwhelming response of, we are not having fifth and sixth grade basketball. Our numbers are not there. Um, we're combining our sixth grade team into our junior high, or, um, various reasons, COVID-related, we can't tell you if we're gonna have a season. So I approached Mr. Maynard because, um, to be honest, I was concerned, if I'm only going to be able to schedule four confirmed games, are parents going to want to pay that fee to have their child participate? Is the board going to want to pay for coaches? Um, is it something that we want to continue? It's getting harder and harder to find officials, and, um, I know that we want to strengthen our program. So one of the ideas that we came up with is just kind of taking a look at our potential numbers. So it's a very, very generic survey that I surveyed the kids that are currently in our school district to see what is the interest in them playing. Um, and I believe Mr. Maynard provides this data to you, but like incoming sixth graders, I want to say that there were, um, yeah. Incoming sixth graders, we only had four girls interested in playing and only five boys interested in playing. And so I'm just not sure if we have the numbers to support the continuation of the program. Um, in fifth grade, we had three girls and one boy. So I wanted to find out some of the reasons behind it. Why are our kids not wanting to participate? And you can kind of tell from the data, um, you know, some just don't like basketball. And I think, you know, partially, we have an amazing PE teacher who promotes wrestling, which is awesome, but I do think that sometimes maybe the basketball isn't there. Then we have a lot of kids that play travel sports, and sometimes when they're in travel ball programs, they can't participate in school-based programs. And to be quite honest, I think eligibility is a big factor right now, um, in keeping grades up and maintaining all of that. So that's where I was at. Um, and so I approached Mrs. Burton and Mr. Maynard just to see, I hate for these kids to not be involved, because I don't want the junior high and high school to eventually not have athletes to participate in their programs. Uh, there are several schools in our county that run their sixth graders with the junior high program. The sixth grade would be a part of the junior team. Uh, so that is one possibility. The benefits obviously would be the development of the athletes and the continuation of the program. Uh, facility use was a big issue, um, just with COVID, working with Mr. Odell, coming up with spreadsheet. But by using Oakwood Grade School, we would have two facilities to be able to use with our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Um, scheduling officials would be much easier, shared transportation, cutting down that cost. And also having our coaches work co-physically together. So those are kind of some of the benefits. I don't know if Mrs. Burton wants to share anything else, but I welcome more input if we want to continue up with the sixth grade program or if we'd like to see it potentially combined for a year.
A lot of schools, um, do play up because our numbers are down too, um, and so this would match some of the conference schools that we have in the area. I don't have a problem with this. In fact, it's sort of exciting because we have low numbers. Basketball for boys was pretty strong, but girls, we had twelve to start out with, and I think we might be at a, at ten now. So that's too much, two games. Uh, we only had three eighth graders. So if we had these sixth graders, that would help strengthen, and it would also give them an opportunity to have that competition that we need to build that high school program. The decision on this is a little time-sensitive for two things. If we're pulling students out of another building, I have to ask IESA for that permission. It will be accepted because of low numbers, but we need to make sure that paperwork's given to them in a timely fashion. And then two, for scheduling, because we also talked, if we do get a handful of, of girls, maybe we could play a couple quarters before the seventh grade game and let, uh, a B team or a group of sixth graders play together and give them another opportunity. So I think we have, um, a big opportunity for our students to be able to build a program and to support our high school program.
I, I would just like to add, if, if it's okay, I just want to thank Mrs. Burton and Mrs. Acton for the work you've done on this. We've, we've been meeting, talking about this. I also see there's an advantage here, given the circumstances for player development. I think we could better develop some players, uh, this way at both levels, because that's the situation we're in, and I think it really benefits, uh, you know, all kids, but especially those kids that are, that are excelling and very purposeful about wanting to, to grow and develop as a player. So I see this as a good opportunity. It is time-sensitive. We, we kind of need to know a little direction tonight, because we've, we've got to get cracking, so to speak, on, uh, getting things communicated to the IESA and so forth. So I, I think they, I, I appreciate your proposal.
I certainly support it, and it's not anything we can't walk back later. So this isn't, I think, the, there's no real, there's no downside to it currently. If your numbers come back up, we can walk it back. But the kids will do better. When you play, when you're forced to play up, you play better.
Kids want to play.
Yeah, if you want to play, well, I think the fundamental stuff to be very helpful.
I'm just shocked. One fifth grade boy, or one boys' grade boy wants to play basketball. And it's been a while ago, but I watched my boys, there were thirty boys, and I was like, Ed, 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 they played five, and then they sent them on the even pitch, and those kids weren't quick when they weren't playing.
Now, the current sixth graders who will be running seventh grade next year, um, obviously, Mr. Dudley and, um, some of those boys, they're, they're strong. There, there's probably eight to nine really strong athletes in that group. But Mr. Boxer said in that fifth grade class, it's guaranteed to get any kind of activity out of them.
Well, I think that's, school at that age for those kids is a muscle memory, right?
Right.
They're not in school.
They're not.
They're not exposed to it. They're not even thinking about it.
We are losing.
And eligibility.
An only other suggestion I would, might offer, and we've done it at the high school before, is send out a survey and say, what would you like to do?
Right.
Is, is there a sport that you would like to do? Not that we have any opponents for you, but is there, is there something we're missing?
Yeah.
And then find a way to offer that. Maybe as much as I love basketball, maybe these kids don't, and maybe it would be, what else to do?
Now, I know that PTO is getting ready to transfer, um, hands as far as the president and vice president. Um, but I think their continued plan would be to offer, I don't know what they call it here, but the intermural, you can't kind of thing. Um, so we would still offer that for fifth grade and below, but, um, if there's interest, but it does really be a.
Yeah, we definitely offered the fifth grade. Buy them the fourth graders.
Right.
What about the fees? You brought up about the fifty-dollar fee.
Yeah, so if it was based on the numbers, we were thinking that the sixth graders would still play or still pay the registration or participation fee to be a part of it. And we would do as much as we could. If the numbers are low, we definitely see the need to play the sixth graders. If the numbers are slightly higher, we can really work with, um, teams to kind of schedule like additional games, um, and let them play even against each other or not, um, conference games, those kind of things.
I, I've talked about, um, my past life, we took fifth and sixth, and we did a tournament. So if we found out that there were four or five schools in this area, you could do a Saturday morning, pull all those guys through, and that would give those kids a chance to highlight if, if we had a number. See, we could, so we could spread that out. We're gonna start small and slow. But we've got some ideas, if we do get those numbers, how we can continue to strengthen that and highlight those kids. Now, when is the season? When?
So girls' basketball, like, start in September, if we went with the junior high. Um, they would start in September, and is it fourth in October?
Yes.
October, November?
Okay.
Do you think people aren't playing because of the fee?
No, it's twenty-five dollars, and I think we were five dollars. I think.
But also, if they were to buy those, they only get two games.
That's where I, yeah.
You weren't, you I once didn't have that. I don't have to share you, because they, right. We look, we look, too, we couldn't find anybody, but we ended up playing in a league out to like church.
I mean, that's what just amazed me. I mean, I called Hopson, I called all these different places, like, we're not doing it anymore. I mean, there's no one to play.
There's not the numbers on a JV varsity, so they have to pull those kids up, so we can't ask them to do two different programs. Plus, we're competing against travelers, teams, and other activities now. Those parents are taking them to other places, or they're just, they just aren't involving them.
That was important, if you used to, maybe, maybe that's fine, but there's definitely a shift in.
We need esports.
Side shift.
A lot of kids like the computer games.
Esports.
That's a game, that's not a game. Ms. Acton, you comfortable with that, right?
And I do want to say that, um, we haven't worked out all the details. We wanted to get direction from the board, but, um, I still will help be the administrator on site for the games, and we will still split that responsibility and make sure that everything's covered.
Any other question for Ms. Acton? Perky, Mr. Richardson?
I don't know, gee, how about myself? I don't have, I don't have anything to add other than my report, um, like myself said, we're testing now, and the fourth, that's a big part of needs. We test on all devices now, so we've got those ready to go, and from my fingers, everything's working. We're almost done. Hopefully get through the rest of the year.
I'm a slum, couldn't make it tonight. Uh, transportation, I shouldn't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I gotta drive still, but I'm not. Um, I don't have anything to add this month, but I think, uh, next month, uh, Mr. Maynard and I'll probably have some conversations of stuff that's gonna be happening probably over the summer. Uh, we'll probably narrow that down to projects and what else gonna happen, so. I think I know you're saying, you know, if somebody got a question.
Mr. Simmons? Mr. Maynard?
All right, uh, just a few things to highlight. I think the board received, uh, my report, uh, for this month, of this week. And I would just wanted to mention about summer school. You heard a lot about that tonight. Couple things in terms of, uh, the financial resources for summer school. Obviously, this is essential for us to help give these kids an opportunity to recover credit, to move forward academically if they take advantage of this opportunity. We are partnering with Project Success. They're providing a lot of, uh, resources for us financially, uh, utilizing our staff and that type of thing. The investment from the district standpoint is gonna be anything that they cannot capture. We're going to provide, which right now, it looks like we're gonna transport these students during June, because we feel like that if we do not bring buses available to these students, we will not see them at our schools this summer. And we just really feel like that's essential. So I want to let you know, we're gonna move forward with, you're okay with that, um, providing that this summer for June for these kids if they need it, okay? And then, uh, other than that, anything extra that comes along the way that we need, that's what we have, some of our. And then, other than that, anything extra that comes along the way that we need, that's what we have. Some of our, our Esther money and COVID money for, and Michelle's on top of that already. So it's just a great opportunity for our kids. I hope they, they take advantage of it, and we're working pretty hard on getting that, we had a big district meeting this past week to pull our resources together. I know Sheila's working hard on the, the food aspect of it as well with Project Success. Any questions on summer school? Okay. Strategic planning, I mentioned a little bit to the board. I just want to put it out there again and just get a a feel from the board. If you are still interested in moving forward with the strategic planning with Educational Leadership Solutions, every year we budget money that, for the professional development for Board of Education and Training in Chicago. We'd like to take that money this next year and move it over to strategic planning for helping guide us with some of these funds that we'll be receiving. I think it's a huge benefit to the school district, the children, and the community to be involved in this process, so I just wanted to open it up for discussion to see if you had any input, so that I could kind of get a feel, if we want to keep moving forward with that, so I could contact them and let them know this is something that Oakwood is interested in doing.
Are the administrators aware of what this is? Have you talked to them about that yet?
We've talked briefly, not a lot in detail. I've just kind of mentioned more in terms of strategic planning and aligning the, I've talked about that in conjunction with the super eval system, about how my evaluation, the administrators' evaluation, coming in with super eval and flowing those goals into the strategic plan. And then from there, with our school improvement planning, with the Illinois Quality Frameworks, moving that into that as well, so systematically, we're all connecting with what we're doing, and we're not fragmented a little bit. So, that's really, I've not shared a lot about the details of strategic planning yet with Educational Resource Solutions, so. But I have mentioned the purpose behind wanting to do this.
So they kind of know, because they're going to have to be involved with the process.
Yes.
This is going to be a third party coming in that we're going to use district funds for, to help guide the entire district, including administrators and the community, through a strategic planning process. And the funds we're going to use to do this is what we would normally use to go to Chicago. It is a little pricey, but we think it's worth it right now, but we feel like, as a board, we feel, well, number one, there's some new people on the board now, but we are, everyone's scattered. There's been so many things put in place that, that are reactionary to get, just to get through the day, and it's different that you're going, it's you're doing, so we just felt like, Mr. Maynard actually felt he's the one spearheading this, and I support it fully, that we need to turn everybody towards the right end zone again and say, that's where we're going, and start heading there together, so. It's going to take some commitment from everybody, after hours meetings and weekends, and we would appreciate your support on that.
Yeah, we could very easily end up with twenty-five to thirty people on this strategic planning committee, and a lot of, a lot of it being involved with our public. Yep. So yeah, so then the other piece was the super eval system. You'd asked me, it started with you asking me to kind of look at some documents that we could put together that would be a stronger valuation instrument for the superintendent that falls in line with the goals of the board, that moves into the strategic plan. I think super eval is the absolute best document that we could use, and I, I like it, because I could also bring in my administrative team underneath this as well. We could utilize the funds that we're currently using for the online board books premiere. Just shift it over to that, utilize that. We could start using, you know, Google Drives and attachments with PDF to take care of that at no cost. So, that was kind of tying this in. I didn't know if you had any comments or thoughts on that in terms of the super eval process for the superintendent, principals, and curriculum coordinator.
I support all of that. I support that.
Okay. Excellent. So as I get more details on that, I kind of want to know the direction we want to go. Obviously, I'll be making sure that the principals know, and the curriculum coordinator, you know, what those documents look like and so forth, because we're working on that together.
As far as board members, how many people actually use Boardbook? You do, okay, so we do have some that
Okay.
Google Docs works just as well.
Okay. I've talked to a lot of districts, they're just using Google, and it's obviously not costing.
I don't think it's the user-friendly as it would be until it switched over.
Yeah.
I stumbled through it.
Yeah, it's hard. I don't like it.
That, that's what happened to me. When I came in, we had the board books classic, and I, I liked it. It was easier. And then during COVID, they decided to upgrade and
Yeah, I'm all over the place.
It's, it's brutal. Okay.
I don't think this, we've got one book with Google Docs, did it even exist?
Not, we didn't have, we weren't with Google, because when I started, I switched it to Google.
So I mean, the technology of what's available out there has changed, so board books probably buying greedy.
And we have another store which we were just for attention, and we pay, I think, for anyway.
Makes sense. It's logical.
Uh, let's see here. The only other thing that I was going to mention tonight is that, like I said, with the financial report, I sent you the cash flow analysis that I do every month, just to kind of keep you informed of money in and money out. Obviously, we're, we're doing a very good job financially of containing costs, even during a time of, of COVID. We're utilizing the funds, I think wisely, that Michelle has available for us through federal dollars, and, you know, if things continue as planned, not any unexpected things, we're going to come in a situation with a surplus at the end of the year. This is the time now, and these next few months, I got to do projections, and just really try to give you a feel. Next month, I should, I should have the April, May, and June anticipated revenues and expenditures filled in, and what I'm predicting as we finish out the year, okay? So be a little more discussion on that then. Right now, the majority of my time is spent working on with Michelle and Chris, Ms. Kibrow, Mr. Richardson, on the, the federal dollars that, that we're receiving and planning that way.
Mr. Maynard, just to clarify, the, I'm looking at the last two columns, our adopted, our FY21 adopted revenues and adopted expenditures. Those numbers are static, right? That's what the original
Yes, sir.
budget process resulted, so that none of our projected forecasts has rolled into what's in the adopted column. So the way I read this is that we're essentially three quarters of the way through the year, and our expenditures are much less than what we expected
Yes, sir.
than it would be by this time of the year. We don't expect that we're going to eat all that up in the last
No, sir.
right? So we are going to see, so you, once you layer in your forecast for the remaining three months, we'll be able to see what we think that surplus is, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I believe that is all that I have, unless you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Agenda item fifteen, we know have, we have no old business items for discussion. Agenda item sixteen, consideration action items, sixteen, agenda item sixteen point one. We have a recommendation for us to employ Lynn Anderson for district mowing for the months of June, July, and August for thirteen dollars per hour rate of pay, not exceeding thirty hours per week. Just so everybody knows, this is actually her thirteenth year of working summer mowing for the school district. Any additional on that?
She already started?
No.
No. Well, she's been doing some stuff. Officially started.
For free, probably.
She's going to, we can't stop her.
She will be decorated for graduation. We have a motion for us, we have a, we have a recommendation for us, do we have a motion to accept that recommendation?
Don't move.
Second. Ms. Ludwig, Mr. Janeski, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by a gentleman to approve Lynn, Lynn Anderson as presented. Plonner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rappert?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion care of our roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point two, we have a recommendation to deploy Kyle Skelton for the Oakwood High School Assistant Principal position beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, for eleven months at a salary of sixty-five thousand dollars, as well as full pay, TRS, and benefits. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I am thrilled to make this recommendation. We had a pretty great interview, outstanding candidate. I wasn't sure we would get somebody with this experience and enthusiasm and energy that he, that he brought to the interview. It seems like a perfect fit for what we're looking for. He comes in with Dean and AD experience at the junior high level. But this gives him an opportunity to move up to high school. I think it's something that he's interested in. He's been in Lawrenceville since fourteen. He's actually a Lawrenceville boy, so we're actually pulling him away from his hometown a little bit, but he seems very excited to be here. He's been up to business a couple times, and even showed up at the football game on Friday night, so. We talked to his references. He is very highly thought of. They are disappointed that he will be leaving them, but they acknowledge that he would be doing a very good candidate.
We have a recommendation for us. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Don't move. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Plonner, seconded by Ludwig, to approve Kyle Shelton's employment as presented. Smith?
Yes.
Rappert?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rappert?
Yes.
Motion care of our roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point three, we have a recommendation to approve Kevin Rupp as volunteer assistant softball coach. Pending background checks and completion of the IHSA coaching requirements.
Kevin has a daughter in the program. She's been there two years. She's been doing the scoreboard and every game and helping out all along. He volunteered since he could not find an assistant coach within the district. He's willing to step up and be a volunteer assistant. So we're looking forward to getting out there and helping out.
We have a recommendation for us. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Don't move.
Second. Plonner? Any further discussion? Roll call?
Motion by Lynn, seconded by Plonner, to approve Kevin Rupp as presented. Rappert?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes. Yes.
Motion. Carry my roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point four, we have a recommendation to approve Lindsay Lowenstein as a volunteer assistant softball coach. Pending background checks and completion of IHSA coaching requirements.
I think we're lucky to, lucky to have her as a volunteer assistant. She's friends with the head coach that we hired, Lexi Snell, and Lindsay played at Dandville for four years. She played at Dak for two years. And now she is a registered nurse at Carl, and she can be a full-time assistant because of her duties, but she's willing to come out and work with the girls and with IHSA. Even if they just come out for a few hours a week, we still have to have them as a volunteer assistant approved by the board. She's been out there two or three nights already this season, and the girls are excited to have her out there as well. We've got two very, very knowledgeable coaches on the softball program right now, and I think that's a huge benefit for the girls.
We have a recommendation for us to approve Lindsay Lowenstein, a motion? Don't move. Second. Ms. Ludwig? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Plonner, seconded by Ludwig, to approve Lindsay Lowenstein as presented. Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rappert?
Yes.
Motion care of our roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point five, we have a recommendation to employ Kevin Simmons as the permanent part-time custodian at Oakwood Junior High School beginning April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, on step one, at the hourly rate of fourteen fifty-seven. Ms. Burton?
Kevin Simmons stepped in for when Dory Price, here's, excuse me, resigned. We used him as a sub, and our main concern was the safety of COVID. Now that we've gotten back to the four days, we've got more of a regular evening position. He's done a really great job. He's easy to work with. We've built out a system, and I look forward to having him continue in the building.
What is this part-time minimum?
Part-time is hours of four thirty to seven thirty. No, usually no more than twenty hours a week.
We have a recommendation for us to employ Kevin Simmons. Do I have a motion to?
Don't move.
Ludwig?
Second.
Ms. Lindsay? Any further discussion? Roll call?
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by Lynn, to approve Kevin Simmons' employment as presented. Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rappert?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Motion care of our roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point six, we have a recommendation to approve the Oakwood Grade School and Oakwood Junior High School basketball proposal as presented. I make a motion? Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just wrap my head around this? Basically, your proposal is saying fifth and sixth graders play at the elder level?
Probably just sixth graders.
Just sixth graders?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Motion by Janeski, seconded by Ludwig, to approve the OTHS, JHS basketball proposal as presented. Ludwig?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rappert? Janeski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Motion care of our roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point seven, we have a recommendation to employ Ashley Woodard for the sec K through two special education interventionist. Reading a math position for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. She'll be on step one of the salary schedule.
We have that mental scan I shared with you, all of the reasons why we need this position, and we are just fortunate to have someone who just finished their degree looking for a position, and we think that she'll be a perfect fit for our building.
We have a recommendation for us?
Even how many people statewide can't find a special education teacher?
I know.
Like five hundred and fifty some of them.
You're looking at two of them.
Right here.
Yeah, she's pretty awesome.
You've dug your feet or what? We've tried to hire her before.
We have a recommendation for us. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Don't move.
Ms. Ludwig?
Second.
Ms. Lynn? Any further discussion? Roll call?
Who is our first?
Ms. Ludwig?
Ludwig Lynn.
Motion by Ludwig, seconded by Lynn, to approve employment of Ashley Woodard as presented. Plonner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Rappert?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Motion care of our roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point eight, we have a recommendation to voluntary transfer Mr. Brian Cox from his PM custodial shift to the AM custodial shift position vacancy, when Mr. Lappin retires.
When is Mr. Lappin retiring?
He is in last official, he has vacation time due, I believe, May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth.
Mr. Cox does a great job. He's a little nervous about all of the lunch responsibilities and all the hard opening of the cheese boxes, but he's going to do a great job. And Brian, they will love him.
We have a recommendation for us. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation? Don't move. Second. Mr. Plonner, Mr. Janeski? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion by Plonner, seconded by Janeski, to approve Brian Cox's transfer as presented. Smith?
Yes.
Rappert?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion care of our roll call vote.
Agenda item sixteen point nine, we have a recommendation to approve the following Illinois Association of School Board Press Policy Updates. Three forty Superintendent Contract Negotiation Process. of School Board Press Policy Updates. 340 Superintendent Contract Negotiation Process. 480 Accounting and Audits. 490 Student Fiduciary Funds. 4150 Facility Management and Building Programs. 620 School Year Calendar and Day. 6300 Graduate, Graduation Requirements. 6310 High School Credit for Non-District Experiences, Core Substitutions Reentering Students. 6320 High School Credit for Efficiency. 6340 Student Testing and Assessment Program. 7100 Health Eye Dental Examinations and Emu- EmuZations, Exclusion of Students. 7140 Search and Seizure. 7300 Extracurricular Athletics. And then the Collective Bargaining Agreement Updates Board Policy. 5336 Sick Days, Vacation, Holidays and Leagues.
Basically, these are all the, the legal updates we have to have in our board policy manual. Most of them are minor. You've seen them for at least a month, if not two, and it's time to take action. And I could get those updated tomorrow morning.
We have a recommendation for us? Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Mr. Plonner? Second?
Second.
Mr. Lynn? Any further discussion? Roll call, please?
Motion by Plonner, seconded by Lynn to approve all the legal updates as presented. Bradford?
Yes.
Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to carry our roll call vote.
I'm just happy we didn't read each one of those individually. I've actually sat on board, been a part of boards where they, they would do each one individually.
Oh, my goodness.
That's bad enough. Agenda item 16.10, we have a recommendation to approve the contract extension and hereby employ Larry Maynard as superintendent of Oakwood Community Unit School District Number 76 for a period of three years commencing on July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2024 for an annual salary of $118,450 as well as full paid TRS and benefits.
Are we sure about this?
I was going to say, do you need me to step out for a few minutes?
I make a motion? Mr. Plonner?
Second.
Ms. Ludwig? Any further discussion?
Glad you are on board.
Thank you so much. It's my pleasure.
Hey, who's out of here?
This is your last.
I still have one more reading. Roll call, please?
Motion by Plonner, seconded by Ludwig to approve Larry Maynard's employment as presented. Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Motion to carry our roll call vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 17, other new business. I don't know other business for discussion. Agenda item 18, next meeting, May 19, 2021 will be the third Wednesday in the month at 5:30 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn at 8:23? Don't move. I don't know who that was.
It's the audience.
Yeah. Second. Mr. Plonner? Any discussion? Roll call?
Motion by Janeski, seconded by Plonner to adjourn at 8:23 PM. Janeski?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Plonner?
Yes.
Lynn? Bradford?
Yes.
Motion to carry our roll call vote. We'll be meeting, I'm no joking, we're 45 minutes to an hour.
We start getting this long and it's.